Okay.
All right.
All right.
So I guess we will be calling this meeting to order. We do have a quorum. Victoria will be late, but maybe coming soon. Someone's coming in. All right. So let's do attendance.
Eli, you're muted.
I have taken attendance.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay. Great. All right. So I need a motion for approval of the agenda.
Move to prove the agenda.
Seconded.
I'm assuming we don't have any discussion, no amendments?
Oh, you know, I would just, I think we can amend the agenda to remove the executive committee because we have not had an executive committee meeting.
This is true. So I have a motion to amend the agenda to remove the section that requests a report of the executive committee. I don't think we have any other committee reports.
No.
Right. So we don't have really any committee reports. You got a second? Any further?
A second.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. Roll call vote.
Okay. Trusty Ackman?
Yes.
Trusty Green?
Yes.
Trusty Kleinman?
Yes.
Trusty Leah?
Yes.
Trusty Moore?
Yes.
Trusty Vanderbrook?
Yes.
Amendment passes.
All right. So the agenda is approved with the amendment of the committee reports pretty much being removed. And so does that count for approval of the consent agenda or do we?
No, that's separate.
Okay. So I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, let's do a roll call vote.
Okay. Trusty Ackman?
Yes.
Trusty Green?
Yes.
Trusty Kleinman?
Yes.
Trusty Leah?
Yes.
Yes.
Trusty Vanderbrook?
Yes.
All right. Do we have any citizens' comments?
We have not received any citizens' comments. If anyone watching would like to make a citizen's comment, we will read them at the end of the meeting. You can either email that to ask@aadl.org, or you can call 734-327-4245 and leave a message and we will play that at the end of the meeting. Or if you're watching us live on YouTube, you can leave a comment in the live chat on YouTube and we will read that at the end of the meeting, but I've received none so far.
All right. We welcome your comments. Bring them on. And now we will go to Josie who will lead us with the financial report.
So if you turn to page 17 of your board packet, you see the overview of cash tax receipts and the fund balance. The, the October 31st, 2020 to November 30th, 2020, change in cash down from $22,597,733 to $21,000,010,617. Tax receipts, this is where it's important. 99.5% of the annual budgeted tax receipts have been received at $17,214,700 for this year. The fund balance activity has not changed too much from last month. It's, and it has increased. In the documentation on page 18, the information is pretty much the same from month to month with the exception under revenue. There's a new sentence about MIPSers, which is the Michigan Public School Employer Retirement System. We receive funds from MIPSers as pass-through income, and we talked about this before in our financial, in our audits and presentations. Pass-through income that's expensed right out each year. It's a one time. It's a certain amount each year. GAAP now requires that we report and budget for the income and expense separately. So you're going to see it in the pages following under the page, you're going to see it on page 20, under revenues, you'll see it MIPSers pass-through, and then you'll see it under personnel. That's where it should be, and that's where it will show up. This will be here and on every financial statement through this year and, and June, we will, when we pass our budget adjustments, this will be one of them. So it will show as an adjustment. In the future, we will budget for this pass-through, and it's usually somewhere between $80,000 to right under $100. So we're likely to budget around $100,000 for it in the next year's budget under personnel, just so it shows. So this, if you're curious, this is the Gatsby Rule 67 that was introduced this year. So that's why that's there. The total cash, the revenue, we've already talked about, the total cash receipts through November equals $17,738,050. And the expenditures, total cash expended through November equals $6,6,645,185. And so revenue over under expenditures, actual cash receipts are 99.48% of budget and actual cash expended is 37.27% of budget. So we're a little less than what we might be in a normal year in terms of cash expended, but you can see that in the rest of the budget reporting. The balance sheet for governmental funds shows this cash revenue in that we've seen with our taxes. And then on page, the statement of revenues and expenditures in the general fund 20, which is the operating budget. And then on page 21, it's the statement of revenues and expenditures of the governmental funds. I think what I would say about these pages at this point is that the revenue for this year is on target to be what we expected it to be. So there is no drop in revenue as we might expect it at the beginning of the pandemic when the conversations were, we were having. However, we are beginning to receive documents from governmental units that provide us with tax funds. We are beginning to receive bills back for changes in taxable value of property. And so that folks who paid their taxes will get refunds based on the change in those valuations, which are going to go down. I'm, I'm told that we still won't see that giant drop in tax revenue in '21, this coming budget year, but we likely will see it in '22, '23. So it's been pushed out another year. And that is all based on the work of people who do a lot more with financial forecasting than I ever will. But I'm relying on them because I rely on them year to year. So it's the county and the city who are letting us know these things. So we're good. However, we should be conservative as we think about expenditures, not just, not this year and next year, but out over a period of time. So are there any questions about the budget? Yes, Darma?
Just have one question about the thing that you just brought up. So would it be in the, in the years where we expect it to be an impact? Would it be, we would know it at the front rather than like there being an adjustment where we have to give back money?
We're, we're going to know it at the front. And because it's delayed, because it's not an immediate hit the way we thought it was going to be, because it's delayed, we're going to have more, we're going to have more notice of what that's going to look like. To see what the housing market really does, there's the, there's the residential housing market, and then there's the commercial market. And they're not, they're not the same. And it's commercial property that we're seeing the chargebacks coming in terms of they're being looked at, their properties being reevaluated. It's larger plots of land that are zone commercial right now. That, that could change, but that's pretty much it is. It may not be the drastic hit on our local area as it will be on other parts of Michigan. And that's been true through all the financial ups and downs that the state and the country have experienced, as Ann Arbor area has not experienced the, the deep cuts that other places do. And that's just about our community and our tax base.
Is, do you think that's both change in taxable value, which is what you're talking about right now, which would then potentially, then we get into all the, the Headley stuff?
The Headley amendment is totally, I mean, that's different. I mean, once the Headley amendment, once you are given a millage based on Headley, nothing, it does not go back up.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So if we, we could, we, we, we may see, we've seen a dramatic increase in the last couple of years, given the values are, have escalated. And so we've seen things drop. And this is where we would actually feel it, right? In the sense that like the, the, the base goes down again, right?
Right.
Um, so like we're, we're, we are left with less because the values have escalated and now the values are going to go back down again. And we're going to be, you know, we've had more and now we're going to be left with less, but.
Well, it's interesting, it's interesting, Jim, that even though we are, our levy is lower because of Headley.
Yeah.
Because of the value of property in our community.
Right.
We actually have not lost funds. We have, we have not lost funds.
No, but this is, and this would be the case though, this would be the moment when we start to feel bad.
This, that's right.
Because the overall value of the millage will.
Bring them less.
The actual cash value of the millage is less.
That's correct.
And then the other que, do we also expect to see what we thought we would see right now, which is just people not paying taxes?
I don't, I don't, I don't think that's what, I don't think that's happening. I think people are paying their taxes. I, I, that's not what I, I haven't been told that that's not happening. I think people were given a non-penalty time to do it. And I think people are paying their, people are paying their taxes, you know, to remember your community, right?
Yeah.
So I think people are paying their taxes. Yeah.
So more, more or less, this is a situation where we are just, where the actual cash value of the millage will decrease based on real estate assessments.
Yes. And if, if it happens, it hasn't happened. It's not clear that it's going to happen in any significant way yet. We won't know that until later into this year. So I'm, so the fact that it hasn't happened and that the impact that even if it, if there's, if there's, if there's some impact, what I'm being told is it's not going to be as serious as was expected at the beginning of the pandemic. So we will see.
I've never thought to ask the question because I'm not sure it mattered as much as it does right now. But do you know what the proportion of, of Ann Arbor taxes is related to commercial properties versus residential properties?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I can find out, but I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, it'd just be a point of interest in terms of, you know, if we, if we see the residential market holding steady or improving, which it, I don't know, anecdotally seems to be, that we'd want to, we'd want like some analysis of maybe like what it, you know, of the proportion of taxes that are collected, you know, what proportion, if there was a reassessment, would we be looking at, you know, in terms of commercial properties?
I think it'd be a good conversation to have next, early next, late winter with new board members about, about this. And I can ask who might be the best person to come talk to us from the county. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Any other questions about the budget?
I, I had just one, Josie. So we've been talking about sort of revenue in and a longer term view, and I want to talk about expenses a minute too. So on page 20, I see that, I mean, unsurprisingly for our organization and many, our biggest line item expense is personnel, right? Which is typically not an, I mean, we, we don't like to retrench in our expenditures there because these are people who are supporting the services. We're under, in terms of expenses this year for salary, we're at 42% rate of our, of the way through the year. And we're only, have expended 38% of our salary line, which is about 10% under. I'm, I'm wondering if that's, whether we have enough cyclical fluctuation normally that we would typically spend more in the summer in programming? And, or, I mean, I guess my real question is, do we have room in the personnel budget and to spare for this year and in the future? Because we haven't been filling attrition positions and things like that.
I'm sorry. I think I need you to rephrase your question.
So at this point in the year, we are 42% of the way through the year. So, but we've only expended 38% of our salaries. So my first question, I guess, is are our salaries generally consistent? So that at the end of the year, if we continue on this current trend, we'll only have spent 90% of our salaries? Or is there enough seasonal fluctuations that that's not a clear picture?
Well, it's not a clear picture because we haven't hired anyone this year. And that is a big part of it. And we have lost people since pandemic began, since the fiscal year began. But we haven't hired people because hiring during this with Zoom is not easy. It's difficult. We had just begun a hiring process for full-time desk clerks, I believe it was desk clerks. And we had to stop for our own stoppage. And so we'll pick that back up likely after the holidays. So we'll, you should see change in this as we move through the winter and summer or early because we're going to be picking back up to hire people as we begin to be able to employ and have more people working. So I hope that, I hope that there won't be a 10%. I want, hope that won't be there at the end of the year.
Okay. So we're sort of artificially low this year because of attrition. And if we were up to full speed and offering our normal level of services, we have to have a higher personnel cost in order to provide that service.
Right. And I also would remind you all, just so you know, for your comparison to other government units and other, other budgets, the library's budget line is still below 70% of the budget, which is amazing. And I think that that's something we should all know and realize for a people-oriented service. We are below 70% and it's fantastic. So, yeah. Thank you.
I mean, and I will, I mean, it's also worth saying, you know, the fund balance is very, very healthy. And we have a lot of resources at our disposal, you know, in the, in the event that we need them, right?
Yes. 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 One of the things you'll, that I would say, and I'll say this to, you know, in the next year, because we, we, we budget a certain amount of money for refund, for paybacks on, on taxes that, where there's been reevaluation. If this is a big amount of money at the end of this year, and it would happen before the end of the fiscal year, then I would recommend we use fund balance for that. So for those payments too. But it's not anywhere near like the close to that amount.
Yeah, right.
It's where it would come from. Yep. I wouldn't ask, I wouldn't look for cuts in the budget to do that. Yeah.
No, I mean, that's a very appropriate use of the fund balance in my mind. That's what it's there for.
Yeah.
Do you have any other questions about the financial report? All right. We are sticking with Josie. I go right into the director's report.
Thank you very much. I have, you know, it's all good news. We resumed vestibule service on the ninth. We've adjusted scheduling to have fewer people in the buildings at any one time. It's been, it's been, it's been a lot of work for a handful of people and, and work for a lot of people. But it's, it's working out, working through the glitches and issues with it. So far, so good. Happy about that. We are, we have, and by Friday, we will have expanded our Wi-Fi reach at all the branches except downtown. So there will be parking lot Wi-Fi in the rear of West Gate. There, there will be entire parking lot Wi-Fi at Mallett's Creek and Pittsville. There will be parking lot Wi-Fi in the southernmost parking lot at Trevorwood, off Trevorwood Drive. So not up by the building, underneath the building, by the parkway, but at the southernmost part of the property. So those Wi-Fi hubs have been added, they're being added this week and will be live on Friday. There's, I was asked this today by the WMU radio, there's no charge for this Wi-Fi for, for using it. And it does not require a library card to use it. And we, all we ask is that folks park legally to allow for everyone who wants to get into the parking lot to be in the parking lot. And all the spots could be filled and there's enough Wi-Fi. It's, it's, it's perfectly fine. And so that was something that we, I talked about on the radio today. I was happy about that. I want to let you know that the, I know we told you that we, that the library was counted in the International City County Management Association Survey, which is an extremely well-respected and well-done survey. The libraries are generally funded and managed by counties and cities and public libraries in the United States. And that is why public libraries are in the survey. It is not really practicable to take out the public library when the survey is given to a community that is a district library, which is what occurs in Michigan. So it stays in. I can tell you in all the years that it's been done, the library in Ann Arbor is always rated well, really well. And so it's never been not a good experience. However, this time, the public library was rated very, very well, and we are all very, very happy about it. And I also want to thank this, the city for putting that information out, even though we're not part of the city, it's government. But I also want to congratulate the city because many of their services also were rated very highly. And I think during, when a survey was given during the middle of a pandemic and they, and this sort of response is what people got, I think it should be acknowledged and applauded. The people worked really hard to do the things that were measured in the survey. So I just want to say to our city colleagues, congratulations. Good job. And then I want, I want you all to know that we are abating the rent for Sweet Waters at West Gate for December, January, and February, for sure. We don't, we don't want to lose them. And they are, obviously have seen a real decrease in their revenues out there because of all sorts of circumstances. Our vestibules are reopened. We have high numbers of people picking up items out there and we're really glad about that. It's incidental that the locker location is near their entry, but that won't hurt either. And so we're hopeful that between the vestibule pickups, locker pickups, and perhaps, you know, what's happening with pandemic, with vaccines and the, you know, the positive aspects of what's going on, that Sweet Waters will be able to stay in that location and be there when we all get back open. So I wanted you to know that. And that's my director's report. And Eli is going to, I'm sorry, Jim.
Yeah. Is the, um, do you want to say more about the abatement or is, I mean, because I guess abatement can mean some different things.
They are not paying rent.
Yeah, okay.
They're not paying rent. We're not charging.
Fully abated. Okay.
I mean, that's what I wanted to. So I think that's, I mean, that, that makes perfect sense for.
Yep.
For, you know, a business.
And so you'll see at the end of the year in revenue, that will, that won't be there. And I felt like we could accomplish that because of what they give us when we're all open and good. And the number of satisfied and happy people who use the Sweet Waters Cafe next to the library. We certainly, I, you know, we don't want to lose them if we can help it. So it's fully abated. So that's my director's report. And the next, under new, I just want to say that Eli is going to do the pandemic closure process presentation. But I'm happy to answer any other questions. Victoria?
Yeah, I just got one. That's great that we're extending the Wi-Fi. And I'm sure that almost everyone who wants it will come in a car. But I would just urge if we see any need from the community for folks to, you know, we, who need to come, that we put at least a couple of chairs in a parking spot so that people could use it if there's a need that we're seeing from the community.
Part of what we're trying to do, Victoria, is provide Wi-Fi from cars because it's cold.
I'm just saying, I would do it.
There are, we won't put chairs in the parking lot. I can tell you now, we won't do that. For safety reasons, there are places to sit around those buildings that are designed for it and outside of parking area that are near the building. The closer you are to the building, the better the Wi-Fi has been. So that's not been an issue. But as far as out in the parking lot, no, we won't put chairs in the parking lot.
So you're saying there's outdoor seating in accessible spots that people could use already. We don't have to make it for them.
No.
We don't have to do a parklet. There, there is existing seating.
Nope. And they've been using that since the beginning of this. And our, our intention here is to recognize that people are using it, needing it, but it's too cold for that. So we're putting, we're putting, we're making it so that people can be there in warmer, warmer place.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions for Josie before we move on to new business? And as she pointed out, Eli is going to lead us on the AADL pandemic closure process.
Jamie has a question.
Oh, Jamie has a question.
I just think the Sweet Waters thing is like continuing in the, I've been so proud to be associated with this institution's decision-making during the pandemic regarding paying staff and paying all your performers who are scheduled to come over the summer. So I mean, this is just another instance where I feel like you made the right call. And so thanks for doing that.
Thank you. Thank you, Jamie.
Anyone else? Any questions for Josie? Although we can all ask Josie questions.
Yes, you can.
Josie, answer this question. All right, Eli, what do you got for us?
Okay. All right. So I've got a slide deck here. So this is, we're going to talk about our faith update today and about how, how we started, what we talked about over the various months as we've met since March, what we're doing now and how we're going about making these decisions. So, all right. So here are the guidelines that we're using internally as we go about making the decisions about service operation and service levels. The first one is prioritize safety over speed. The main goal is to keep the patrons and the staff safe. That's why we designed the vestibule pickup service with the, with the contactless lobbies. It's still something that relatively few other organizations have a similar product. Most people are doing either curbside or some sort of full staffed location. So we're very happy with the way that we've been able to come up with a service model that really does prioritize safety. But it means that sometimes people are going to be waiting longer for their materials. And as we get into times when the public health metrics are more challenging, there's ways that we can react to that. We'll talk more about that as we go. The big thing is to make decisions based on metrics and thresholds that are produced by county and state health authorities. So when we're going to make these decisions, we are really just looking at the public health metrics that are being released by the, that are being released by the health, the health authorities. We are not in the health business. We don't need to be in the health business. Of course, if there is a county or state health order that's going to address us directly, of course, we're going to follow it. But we know that that's not always possible, even when it should be. And so we're going to make our own decisions within the metrics and thresholds and the guidance that has been released by public health entities around, across the US. One of the big things is what else is open is not a factor. We are only really responsible for the library. And most other things that are open are mostly driven either by political or economic concerns that really don't apply to the library. We don't have a dollar value associated with being open. We don't have revenue associated with being open. It's all about service. So when we look at what else is open, you know, we can't fall into the trap of saying, well, Menards is open. You know, because, you know, whether Menards is open or not be open, that doesn't have anything to do with public library service. So what else is open is not one of our decision-making factors. And then when we look at opening up or closing down, we don't want to take on new risk while stats are trending up. So if things are getting worse, that's not the time to take on new risk. We might deploy new services while stats are trending up if they don't involve new risk. A great example of that was shelf service, which used our existing distribution model. We did that while cases were starting to trend up, but it didn't really involve new risk at the time. And then similarly, we need to see at least two, we're two weeks of a downward trend before we start to reverse restrictions to service. Because you don't want to be opening and closing and opening and closing because these metrics are noisy. They move up and down and you want to look at what the trends are and which direction they're going when you're making decisions. So those have been the guidelines that we've been considering as we make these decisions. Any questions so far? All right. So let's look at the My Safe Start Plan that was released back in March. One of the things that's important to remember is that this plan was widely lauded by public health experts across the US for being one of the few statewide plans that used incident-based thresholds for deciding when to move on. And this is what we have up here at the top of the screen is what those thresholds were when the plan was first announced back in March. There's a new case per day threshold per million, and there's a positive test rate threshold. And when these were first established, we were said that we would advance to phase two when new cases per day fell, were, were over 40 or the new positives were over 20%, so on and so forth. Okay? So these metrics were established to set. So these metrics were established to set incidence-based thresholds for when you can move on to the next phase, which was a great idea, and there was a lot of very positive response in the national press from people who are public health pundits, really, about Michigan's plan and how Michigan is approaching this. So with that in mind, these were the phases that we described to you when we met back in May as we were getting ready to think about when we might be opening. All right? So in phase three, we would offer, continue to offer remote service, which is basically when the library is, is closed. All the digital online services, the email text and phone calls, new cards and renewals, the online winter game, et cetera. This is sort of, and this is what we also continued to do, remote service for the past several weeks while we were closed, for three and a half weeks. Then when we got to phase four, we would launch vestibule service. We started this in late June. That includes returns and new checkouts and Mel and all kinds of stuff. The outdoor summer game continues. But that was the first real access to the collection. And then we had said, when we get to phase five, that that's when we would start opening for browsing again. All right, that we would have some limited open hours and walk-in computing. Here's the one thing that changed since we talked about this to you back in May, is before we start got, before we had started with vestibule service, we had no idea what the demand for public computing would be or wouldn't be. We knew it was going to be one of the trickiest things for us to actually offer safely, safe for the patrons, safe for the staff. One of the big challenges of, of, is that you can't realistically offer someone a half-hour computing session and have it meet their needs. But if they're there longer than a half an hour, you're starting to get into real danger territory with ventilation and being next to others. So it's a very challenging set of things. One thing that has been very interesting to us is that there's been extremely little demand for public computing. We've not, people have come into the vestibules and asked about it, and most people, we have been able to help them either through our No Computer Helpline when they're trying to do things online, or by referring them to other services. So we have had very, very few people asking us, when are you going to open for computers again? Who we haven't been able to help with other services. Okay? So, uh, and one of the, one of the biggest parts of that, I think, is that the distribution of devices is much more economically broad than it was ten years ago or so. And that, and increasingly, we're seeing demand for wifi and less demand for devices and things like that. Not that we haven't heard from a few people, but I was expecting probably a hundred times as much, as much request as we've actually heard. And for some of the people who've been asking us about, we say, what can we help you with? We can do this, or this, or this. You know, they say, I just want to get on Facebook. Right? Which is not something that we necessarily have a great solution for. But we hope to get that back as soon as we can open for browsing. But because it's such a high-risk activity, we don't plan to allow public computing until we reopen for browsing. And that's the only change to this phasing plan over the past several months. Any questions there? Okay. Then someday, full service, regular hours, open seating, events, puppet shows, candy, Halloween, all kinds of stuff. All staff will be back to working the building, meeting rooms, bookings, and rentals, all that great stuff. We'll get back there someday. So. This was the chart that we showed to all staff at our meeting in, in, uh, it was, I believe it was June eighth. This is our first all-staff meeting after we closed, was we were getting ready to deploy vestibule service. And this was a very hopeful moment because on that day, at that moment, there had been zero cases of COVID that day on June eighth. There ultimately was one. That was definitely where it bottomed out. So that was there, and you can see here the thresholds. This line here, the yellow line, that's the phase two line. Or the phase, I'm sorry, that's the phase three line. This is the phase four line. This is the phase, I'm going backwards. You'll see why I'm going backwards. This red line was phase two. This orange line was phase three. This yellow line was phase four. The blue line that you can hardly see was phase five. All right, those were those, those, uh, levels at that time. And here's what that curve looked like as of that moment. Now that curve is this mild little bump down there way back at the beginning. All right? And what, what we're going to talk about now is how the metrics have changed since we started doing this, right? The big change happened. Mystartmap.info is the most definitive source of COVID stats in the state. It's a UMSI project in conjunction with a bunch of the School of Public Health and a bunch of great organizations. It also relies solely on county data. So this is just aggregating all the county data across this, across the state. So on September twenty-second, because of ongoing confusion between the My Start Map colors and the phases and the levels, and the governor's economic recovery phases, they separated those. So on September twenty-second, My Start Map abandoned the risk phase model and began using a risk levels model. Now, one of the big things about it is now goes the other way. It used to go one, the most extreme on the left, and then it would keep getting better and better and better until we moved all the way to the right. Right? Now, one of the problems with that is that then it means that if things get worse, you're going backwards, right? And nobody likes going backwards. Whereas the risk levels approach it with the lowest risk level on the left and the highest risk level on the right. Because what this is, is a needle. It's a needle that's moving and showing you what the levels are in the community. And we should look at it as weather as opposed to a journey. Because some days are going to be better and some days are going to be worse. It moves forward and backward. That doesn't mean we're going backwards. We're, we can only go forward in this level of existence, right? So the risk levels now start at low and go up to E. Okay? Now, you can see here, they had to add a new level up on the top. The new purple one, level E, was not there back at the beginning. Right? So level D was what was the phase two line. Okay? So with that all in mind, we have been looking at this, and it's clear that it's time to move away from the phases when we talk about this and talk about the risk levels instead. So here's how the two things match up. So what had been below set, now here's one quick thing, is that we're really only looking at the new cases per day per million average and not at the positive test rate. Because here in Washtenaw County, people take it very seriously. We're very fortunate. And even in our worst, worst days of new cases, we haven't had a positive test rate much above ten percent. Which, while ten percent is not a great positive test rate, it shows that most people who aren't feeling well are going and getting tested. And it means you don't have a lot of uncaught cases out there in the community. Of course, there are some. But when you compare this to communities in other states that might have twenty, thirty, forty, even fifty or sixty percent positive tests, positive test is not a metric for us to watch to know what our risk level is. So this is just looking at new cases per day per million. If they're below seven new cases per day per million people, uh, that's low. That is what they call low in the risk levels. Seven to twenty, which used to be yellow, is now A. Twenty to forty new cases, which used to be orange, is now B. Forty to seventy new cases, which used to be, uh, you know, ketchup red, is C. And seventy to one fifty, which used to be the dark red, is D. And above that is E, or a hundred and fifty. Okay? So that's how the two things kind of fit together. So those thresholds are all still there. So, based on that, here's what, how we're thinking about this now. We're going to base our service changes on risk level trends, not on the economic recovery phases. Because the economic recovery phases are elements of, you know, they're driven by pop, politics and economic decisions. And those aren't part of what we need to be looking at when we're making our decisions here. Okay, so what that means is when cases fall below low, we can start looking at browsing service. We have learned over the past several months that we are comfortable operating vestibule service in risk levels A, B, and C. When we start to get into risk, risk level D, and the cases are trending up, is when we start looking at reducing vestibule service. This is where we are right now, where we have vestibule service, but we've made some changes to it to decrease the amount of staff that's required. And I'll tell you more about reduced vestibule service at the end here. And then if things keep going up, we might go all the way back to remote service level E, which is what happened a few weeks ago when we closed on November fifteenth for three and a half weeks. So again, the metric that we're looking at is the Mystartmap.info Washtenaw County Daily New Cases Per Million Seven-Day Rolling Average. That's the line that we're looking at, and where it falls in relationship to these risk levels helps advise us on which, whether we should expand or retract services. Any questions about this? All right. So let's apply that then to what's happened over the past few months and see if it, see if it makes sense. So, once we reopened back down here in June, that was when cases were almost at low. They were in A. We were very comfortable, right? Then we had our, our little second wave. We peaked up very slightly above the D-line. But that's not a time we were really thinking about closing because it didn't stay there very long. And as you can see.
Oops.
We, Eli is.
We lost you, Eli.
Isn't he sort of the person?
I'm letting him know we lost his audio. So, um. So I'm not sure.
He might have to leave and come back.
We might have to leave and come back. So I'm not sure I can close out his. Oh, here we go. So, okay, so what I can tell you is I've seen this presentation. So I think what he was going to finish up by letting you know is that what we're doing in what we call vestibule service and the way we, way we are right now by reducing vestibule service, we aren't offering shelf service right now, and we won't for a while. Melcat has been suspended. Those are both very labor-intensive services. They require people in the buildings and ways for shelf service that we weren't having, would normally have to have. And then with the, um, Melcat is a, it takes two people, and we are a heavy borrower, heavy lender. So it's a busy thing, and so people are close together, and you can't avoid it. And so we, we, we've stopped that for the time being. That's how we've reduced services. Um, also, we, it slows down how many holds can be put out and picked up um, in a given period of time because we've limited the number of people working at any given time. Seven during the week. So we have groups of people working days, groups of people working evenings, and groups of people working only Monday, Sunday, Monday. So it's, we have set ourselves some, um, goals for how much we can put out. And so we throttled it down. Not, we're not telling people how much they can put on hold. We are ourselves throttling down how much we can get out there. And so that's what he, we mean by reduced services.
I'm back. Sorry about that.
It's okay. I, I, I kept going for you and talked about, about what we mean by reduced services. I didn't go through the slide. But I went back to reduced vestibule services, so you're not going to have to talk about that.
Sorry about that. Had to move to a different wifi zone. All right, so. So as we were saying, then things got better a little bit around October. Then they started getting worse again, but then they leveled off. But already we were over that E-line and starting to get nervous about, might we be have to close? Then things started really taking off, trending up in a completely very sharp uptick. And then that's the time that we had multiple positive cases, and it was a very easy decision to decide this is time to take a break because the cases were up so high. And then, in the meantime, the next, uh, two days later, uh, the governor declared the pause. And then by the time that the pause wound up, things had stopped moving up and gone back down. And now here we are, more than two weeks past peak for what hopefully will be the third peak, uh, here in Washtenaw County. So, this metric or this, this approach, whoops. This really fits with what, how we had been thinking all along as far as when we start feeling like restrictions are needed, when we start feeling like the doors need to be closed, and when we start feeling like things can be reopened. Okay, go ahead, Dharma.
So then, in this model, and maybe I'm, um, getting ahead of you, but aren't we still in E?
We are still in E, but because cases are trending down. We were comfortable reopening.
Okay.
Yeah. If, if cases had not turned around, we probably would have extended the closure. But by the time, by the time we were getting ready to open, the peak was already in the past, and far enough in the past that there weren't going to be new cases. You know, the past, past five, the most recent five days of data don't really ever give you the trend because cases are reported on the day of symptom onset, right? So it means that things get added on the past few days. But it was clear to us that things had peaked and they were trending downwards. And it made us, uh, and then also, in that meantime, we were able to finally implement our pod schedule, which means each building now has at least three teams that never interact with each other. There's a daytime team, there's an evening team, and then there's a weekend team roughly. It, that's not precisely the way they line up. We also have at the downtown library a third and fourth floor team, and then three teams on the other floors. So that makes it a lot easier for us to close down one group if we do wind up with another positive test because now we have a lot less intersection. However, it is not possible to eliminate intersection entirely. We have our facilities people, we have our IT people. There are some people who just have to move around to do their jobs. We'll be minimizing contact as much as we can, but we're in a much better position now. And also, we were able to discontinue some services, and I'll talk some more about that in a minute. Did that answer your question, Dharma? Okay. All right. So, just to remind you what's involved in vestibule service, uh, we're currently offering that from noon to eight PM daily. By appointment, you can pick up items from the locker or the lobby. We now have the lockers everywhere but downtown. Uh, you can get books, CDs, DBs, Blu-ray, Blu-rays, tools, art prints, and magazines. Magazines are probably the, uh, the sleeper hit, uh, in that not a lot of people think to that they can still get magazines from us. But you are able to request a specific issue of a specific magazine and pick it up just like a hold. Uh, we also have continued our printing service. From monitoring that service, it's extremely clear that those are mostly very important documents. A small smattering of recipes and other not as important documents, but for the most part, they are, you know, benefit applications, job applications, financial documents, things that people really need. So, and also that doesn't involve any staff being in the building who aren't there already. That service basically carries no risk associated with it. Uh, summer game orders are things people can pick up. We have suspended filling summer game orders. I'll talk about that when we get to reduce vestibule service in just a minute. But that is something that people can still pick up. Shelf service bags, another thing that people can pick up, but that is temporarily suspended. And then FADL, friends purchases. Those, they're still doing those. There's a bunch of them in the lobby ready to pick up, so that is something that has been able to continue.
Only downtown.
Only at the downtown.
Only downtown, right.
Also, in those vestibules during the lobby hours, we have the community bulletin boards that we've added. Uh, we had some requests for that earlier, but that has died off a little bit, so there's not a lot of things on them. But we are ready if people are trying to put up post, uh, postings for the community. Tax forms, until the tax deadline on October fifteenth, we were distributing, uh, tax forms in all the locations. And during election season, we were distributing League of Women Voters, uh, League of Women Voters voter guides. Uh, the Michigan Daily is available at all locations. The University Record Book Pages is a, uh, it's a, I think it's a monthly publication that talks about things that people are interested in, new releases and things like that. And then our own AADL promo materials. And then also, and this is seems silly, but you can totally walk into the vestibule and ask the person the question. They're going to look it up. That also means that in, on the screen in the vestibule, they will help you apply for a library card if you have no other access to technology. If you don't have email, if you don't have a phone, if you have an ID, you can show it to them on the screen, and they will fill out the form for you and will make a provisional card to get you going. So, and then plus on top of all that, as we talked about, the twenty-four-hour high-speed wifi. So that's what vestibule service includes. How has vestibule service been used? It's been used like crazy. Since August, we've fulfilled almost two hundred and sixty thousand pickups, uh, across all locations. And the use curve is totally different. Like Mallett's is always busy, but Mallett's is our busiest location, busier than Westgate. And downtown suddenly is our least busy location, which is good because that's where all the stuff is that everybody wants. So the staff is able to pull stuff off the shelves and send it to other locations. Across those two hundred and sixty thousand pickup appointments, about twenty-six percent of them are AV and seventy-four percent of them are print. That is, that's astonishing to us because usually AV is about fifty percent of our circulation. So what you really see here is the age of streaming has really arrived, in that people are really streaming a lot more content. The things that they are finding most unique and valuable from us are the print resources and not so much the, uh, digital discs that they can get everywhere. There's still a lot of them going out. Like that twenty-six percent is about the same number of holds that we used to fill for AV. So it's about the same number of holds, but there's no browsing happening, which is a big part. Like typically, we would see sixty percent of all of our circulation happening from browsing. So right now, zero percent of our circulation is happening from browsing. So we're seeing a big change for the way the collection's being used. As far as kids and teen versus adult, um, usually that's pretty close to like almost seventy-five percent adult. So we're seeing a big increase in kids, kids materials, which isn't surprising because again, that's the stuff that's hard to find and good quality. So forty-three percent is kids and teen. Teen is a tiny little sliver of that. If I put it on, you wouldn't even see it. For the most part, because there's not that much content that is teen-specific. And interestingly, a lot of those And interestingly, a lot of those teen material checkouts are actually checked out by adults. Especially all the YA novel boom where adults are reading a lot of YA stuff now. And then out of those 268,000 appointments, 92% of them for lobby pickup, 8% of them were for locker pickup. And, but that includes, most of that time, we only had the two lock, we only had the two lockers. 13 of them at Mallett's and 52 of them at Pittsfield. So now we have 40 more lockers. So there's a lot more use of that now. Any questions?
Eli, I have one. So this is 260,000 pickup appointments. Is an appointment a single item or multiple items?
A pickup is a single item.
Thank you. That's amazing.
Patrons don't necessarily think about it that way, but in the database, that's what they are.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Eli, now that it seems like you've gone through the different phases, I did wonder like how the library is thinking about cases and its own staff as a metric. I mean, you explained what happened most recently, but like, how are you using that as a metric for what should happen with the library services?
I think that the, the main thing is that basically if there's a positive, we're going to quarantine that pod.
Right.
And our ability to operate depends on which pod it is and which building it is, you know? But part of the advantage of having three pods per building is even if we have to quarantine the daytime pod, we could bring the evening and the weekend pod in alternating days and probably still stay open. If we have two pods at a building that need to be quarantined at a time, we may need to close that building. So it's basically when we have a positive on staff and they were in the building, because you know, we have a lot of people who are not ever in the building currently. But if we had a positive staffer that was in the building during the time when the health department tells us they were likely to have been infectious, we're going to quarantine that pod and send everybody home.
And then you can expect perhaps a change in service just because a pod has been completed.
I mean, depending on the, right, depending on the pod and the location.
Yeah. At the very least, it could slow things down. At the most, it could close a building for a day or for a shift or for a week. It depends on what the extent is. Does that answer your question, Dharma? Okay. So just comparing the volume, our total volume, 2019 to 2020. So the green bar, which is behind the blue bar, shows us total checkouts per month in 2019. The blue bar shows us total checkouts per month in 2020. And what this shows us is that each month, we were doing a larger and larger percentage of our pre-COVID business. And in October, the last full month, because we closed midway through, through November. In October, we hit 64% of our 2019 volume, which we are just astounded and delighted by that we're able to do basically two thirds of our full amount of business with zero open libraries. So we're very pleased by that. We expect that percentage to continue to grow over time. There's still people that are discovering it. The other thing about this is it's also worth remembering that there's a large portion of our community and particularly of our most avid users who flat out aren't leaving the house at all for any leisure purposes. So a lot of our most avid users are not using the library at all right now. So it's, we're delighted by this volume of usage. Any questions about that? Okay. So just to talk briefly, we've been talking about this as we go, but just to put it all in one slide. Reduced vestibule service is when the Washtenaw County COVID-19 risk level is level D or above. Operational changes to vestibule service may be needed to reduce the number of staff in the building at a time. And the goals of this are just because when we are operating without limits, when the patron demand is our sole driver of how much work there is to do, that can involve a lot of staff to be able to get all of the, all of the pickup appointments filled each day. Basically each day, they get a list of all the things that need to be checked out and moved into the vestibule and they have until noon to do it. So that's the, something that you can imagine gets logistically intense as the numbers climb. So here are some of the things that we can and or have done to reduce the staff demand associated with vestibule service when case levels are high and we're reducing service. So the main one is suspension of Melcat and or shelf service. You heard Josie talking about this before. Melcat is an extremely labor intensive process. And the amount of time it takes to check out one Melcat, we can check out 10 or 15 things for our patrons. So it's just a very time consuming service. It's also used by a pretty small percentage of ADL patrons. So it's when we look at things, this is, gives you a huge amount of bang for the buck. And most importantly, it's super easy to understand in that it's either on or it's off. You know, we're either getting new Melcat stuff or we aren't. It doesn't require a lot of explanation. And the Melcat users want to know about it. So we hear from them and we explain it to them. And we, both Josie and I have been again surprised by how little we've heard about this interruption this time for Melcat. Similarly with shelf service, the big deal with shelf service is that it is labor intensive to fill the bags and choose the things. We have a dedicated team that does that. And currently it would involve people going into the building who otherwise wouldn't need to be there. So what we're doing instead is when we get people who are asking us what happened to shelf service, we're connecting them with the librarians and librarians are placing some holds for them. So they're still getting recommendations, but they're not getting a bag of stuff handpicked for them right now. If cases continue to trend downwards, we expect to resume this pretty early in January if things keep moving on this trend. We also hope to resume Melcat in January. Melcat only has certain days when they can add new libraries, but they've been doing it almost every week recently. So we should be able to join pretty quickly. Once the levels are trending in the right direction, we're ready to resume that service. Currently, we've suspended filling summer game shop orders. We still have about 1,700 orders that still need to be filled. People are asking us about it. We're explaining it and everybody's being really nice. You know, if someone emails us and says that their four year old uses their summer game points to buy coffee for grandpa for Christmas, we are filling that order, folks. We are, I filled one today for that sort of circumstance. So if people have extreme circumstances, we're going to do what we can to make them happy. But the routine filling of this have been suspended for now. The exception is as we start to have a little bit more labor available, as we get caught up with materials, we might start packing the bags, but not sending them out again until after the holidays. So that's one thing that we were able to suspend. Another thing is just reduced paging, which leads to longer wait times. So the paging list is the list of every item that is on the shelf that has an outstanding hold. And all, what part, a big part of the book pro's work is going around the building and pulling things off the shelf that it holds on them and checking them in so that hold gets triggered, right? So one thing that we're doing now is that we have the tool that the bookshelves use to pull the items is now limiting the number of items that it shows them each day. Because they are going to get that list done no matter what. So what we've started doing is throttling the size of the list and also the list starts with the oldest outstanding holds as opposed to the newest ones. So people who have been waiting the longest are getting their holds filled first. This enables us to not have to limit people's, as Josie was saying, we don't have to limit their number of pickups. We don't have to limit their number of holds because we're limiting the number of things that are coming into the system from the backend. So that's not something that patrons see, except for the patrons who are very accustomed to very quick service, right? And we will hear from people who say, and we get this email several times a week and it's almost always extremely nice saying, you know, usually takes two to three days. I've been waiting a couple of weeks. What's going on? And we just tell them. We say we're operating with reduced service. We're operating with reduced staff. And as of this moment, we have about 20,000 things on the paging list. So that's going to take a number of weeks to get caught up to. But if you can envision, if we threw a bunch of labor at it and pulled them all off the shelf at once, then the next day we have 20,000 pickup appointments we have to put out. So this is where we're putting the throttle because it doesn't affect the patrons' ability to use the system. It just affects how long they wait for their things to come in. Now, the one thing to keep in mind is that paging is almost exclusively, no, I say this without judgment, unpopular items. Because if it's a popular item, it's not sitting there on the shelf. It's out in circulation. And it gets filled when it comes back. It goes on to the next person as opposed to having to be pulled off the shelf. So these are only things that aren't all already checked out. Okay? The other thing that we will need to make changes to is reduce new material processing. We need to decrease the number of staff that are in the building at the same time. That can lead to longer wait for new items, longer wait for new items to get into, onto the shelf, longer wait for items to hit the catalog. Generally, we can add things to the catalog when people ask about them. But you know, this used to be a super snappy process. And right now it's something that is just, there's a lot of delays that have to be built into it to keep distance from each other. You know, they used to work very collaboratively and now they have to be more spaced out and that has an impact on efficiency. We're also doing a daily appointment volume cap. What this means is we kind of have like a fail safe. Once one branch hits 900 pickups for the next day, we stop allowing new pickups for that day. And so far, it's only been happening for tomorrow. Like it hasn't been, not tomorrow as in Nick, as in Wednesday, the 16th, but the next day. Like we're only running out like at 2:00 or 3:00 PM on the day before. So it's not affecting a lot of people and they can always book it for Thursday or the next day or whatever. But to keep us from needing more staff in the mornings to fill the vestibules, we've started basically removing tomorrow from the list of available days when we start getting too many appointments. That's another good way for us to throttle it without us having to say to them, you get three appointments this week. Choose when they are. And then finally, we talked about this a little bit, depending on what happens, we may need to do reduced hours or reduced days of service or intermittent branch closures. That would be much more driven by actual positives on staff than it would be by specific health conditions. We are comfortable providing vestibule service 12 to eight, seven days a week in the, at this case level. The issue is it's the, we're not going to scramble the way that we might have even in August to get things filled. So that's it for how reduced vestibule service is. Any questions about any of this? Okay. So someday, oh, other changes is needed. Yeah. Someday we're going to get back to this. Someday we'll have the lobatorium again. It'll have a beautiful new screen. We're, you know, we've got so many exciting things going on inside the building. And when we're able to open again, people are just going to be so delighted by all the new things that we've been able to do while they're closed. And you know, even failing that, there's another eclipse in 2024. So we'll be ready. We'll be ready in April 2024 to, you know, you look at this now and it looks like something from a zombie movie, right? But we'll be back there. This will happen again. I don't think we'll do it quite exactly this way.
No, we won't.
We will get back there. And that's it. Any questions?
That was amazing. Thank you so much. We asked for it. We got it. And probably more than we were expecting. And I just want to thank you. We really appreciate that. That was very in depth. And I mean, it put it into perspective. I think it gave us what we needed. But I'm sure this is why we had this meeting, right? So let's, let's talk about this a little bit more and then we'll hopefully some citizens will chime in with comments as well after we finish discussing it. So. Come on, you guys. Usually you have a lot to say.
I'm overwhelmed by all the data. It was amazing. I don't think there was any question besides the one that I asked. I mean, there's nothing unanswered. So I would just echo what Karine said about, I really appreciate the work and the thought that went into this presentation.
I hadn't thought of this before you all presented it, but it made a lot of sense that our response in terms of building closures, it can be really directed at when we have staff outbreaks, which of course we hope not to have. But that, that, that's something that we can do in, well, you all can do in the future. And it seemed like a really smart way to organize it. And you made it look easy, Eli, but I, I'm sure this wasn't easy either to come up with a presentation or the thought and analysis that went into sort of figuring out what, if these things happen, what we'll do in response.
That's a, I will say this for Eli. He pulled all the, he pulled it all together. But the team has worked for weeks to think about how to plan and how to respond. And that we hadn't written it all down. It's kind of how we, how we, how we go. But Eli did pull it together this way so that people, we could all see it. And it's worthwhile. And I thanked him already today. I told him he killed it. It's great. And, and he did. And I appreciate it very much. And the team, everybody saw it Monday morning. And we were able to talk about it and add and ask questions and that sort of thing. So it's, he definitely pulled all of how we think and how we've acted into these screenshots. And so thank you very much, Eli.
My pleasure.
I feel like, sorry, go ahead, Victoria.
I, I just wanted to say, are the staff comfortable with this plan in terms of the risk that it, I mean, both for the service they can provide the community, but for the risk it provides to themselves?
It depends on who you ask, probably. I think that we have people who probably have more anxiety about being around other people than others. What we don't, we're, you know, we're doing, I, I do think that the staff generally would say to you that they recognize the library is making a huge effort to keep things safe for them as possible at work. And I think they, I think that most people would absolutely say that. They've given us good feedback about the pod development and the implementation of it, which we've been able to build back in. And we take that feedback and we act on it. And I think people feel good about that. But to be able to say to you that every single person's comfortable, I don't think, I don't, I doubt that. And I won't say that. So.
And I think that's achievable because everybody, different risks in life and different.
Experiences, right.
Yeah. And so, you know, to achieve comfort, you know, I mean, what I trust is that people are, you know, that people are being heard when they express, you know, a desire to have to work differently given their various factors.
Right.
I would also, I know Jamie, you wanted to jump in, so you go first.
No, go ahead. You can share your second thought and I'll.
I, I appreciate the thoroughness of this and I also appreciate understanding the sort of divergence of the, the scales and the relationship to the original kind of the restart plan and sort of where we are now. That's, that's so clear. I think this exercise is really important, not only just like for us to understand the rationale, but also for the public to understand and sort of our, our public accountability. So I appreciate it on that level. And while we may, while what we do may not be affected directly by what else is open, when other things are open, we are in the court of public opinion around what we should be doing. And so that is a way in which we are very directly affected. And I mean, I feel after this presentation really certain that, that you all, I think, I think like a lot of us in our jobs and our lives have been just figuring this out very intuitively to try to move us towards a sense of reducing the risk and continuing to kind of figure out how to deliver service, you know? And, and this is a really great kind of like distillation of, of, of that, that strategy and that intuition through what has been a really just completely unknown and unpredictable experience for all of us. So I appreciate that. And I, and I would also like, I think, I was looking at just kind of rereading the blog today and just trying to understand how we're communicating to this, to the public. I think there are some people that might want to take the deep dive on this. And I think we could beef up how we communicate about it for those who might want more information. Because this is really a communications exercise. Ultimately, our community, I think, is really understanding what, about how we're operating when they know what logic is sort of driving that. And I don't think anybody, certainly none of us, expect that the library is going to deliver the sort of 350% service that is delivered in a normal time. And it's worth saying it, right? Like we, none of us expects things to be like normal. But clearly, you know, the, you're, you're really fulfilling a demand for a service that's there. You're doing it safely.
Thank you, Jim.
Jamie, you wanted to say something?
Sorry, I had to kick my fan club out.
I like your fan club.
I also like my fan club, but they spend a lot of time talking the exact same time as me. Yeah, this is like, it's perfect, you know? Thank you. I think, like for years, I feel like especially talking with Jim, there's a lot of like, oh, can you guys just codify like the way that you're thinking about this so that we can kind of understand how the magic happens or so that it's documented? And I think sometimes that's like sort of antithetical to, to magic. And to like, you know, to kind of the flow of how like the special sauce at ADL can work. Then I think last month, I just sort of felt it come to a head for me where I did not feel like I knew where your heads were. And I felt scared by that because this is a scary time and I wanted to feel like we were all on the same page. And like, it's a beautiful presentation. It makes total sense to me. Now I feel like I can be like, this is where we are. This is why. Now I feel like I can be like, this is where we are, this is why you can get this right now. Or, you know, hopefully we won't have to say it again, this
Yeah.
You know, in the near future, but you know, if we have to step backwards, we can be like, well, this is why and we really thought this out and and we kind of, I don't know, I just feel like that that's the value of the board. It's like the sounding board maybe to kind of like respond to the direction of things. And I really appreciate your giving us this to respond to and thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Glad it, I'm glad it's what was necessary and helpful.
Yeah, it's like, thank you.
Anyone else have any comments to share? Hopefully, the community has had an opportunity to, after having seen that presentation from Eli, to share some comments as well.
I was going to ask, are those slides going to be part of the things uploaded for our documentation for this meeting?
Yeah, we, we can put the slide deck on the attachments to the video, what the agenda goes.
Okay, awesome, thanks.
All right, so citizens comments, what do we have?
I have not received any others, let me just check the YouTube.
This is for you. It means we're, that means they're happy, so.
Let me make sure they're having any in the YouTube chat and there, there have not been.
Okay.
So I'll take this opportunity to, before we move to adjournment, to again, thank Victoria for her years of service to ADL and one more meeting beyond what she expected. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Victoria.
My pleasure.
I'm going to miss you so much. We'll have to designate someone to ask difficult financial questions.
Feel free to continue in that hole in the citizens comments.
We expect it.
Yeah.
All right, it will be a new team here in January, so that's something to look forward to. Yep, so we, this was a nice, short, but very fulfilling and substantive meeting. So I am happy to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn please.
All right, Molly has seconded and no discussion, assuming let's go ahead. We don't need a roll call vote, do we?
Nope.
All right, yeah, let's go ahead and adjourn. All right, thank you all, see you next year.
Thank you all. Happy holiday, happy New Year.
Happy holidays.